Sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Winnebago County. We'd also like to thank the NINA Public Library for their generosity in providing this meeting room. I'm Anna Olson and I will be your moderator this evening. I'm going to ask you to please silence your cellphones if you haven't already done so. We have ushers Becky Allen, if you'd wave, and Heather Shemesta. They have papers, so if you think of a question that you'd like to ask our panel, please just get their attention. And we just ask that you print your question legibly so we can read it. And we'd like to start by introducing the candidates for the 2015 NINA School Board election. My far right, we have Miss Betsy Ellenberger. She's an incumbent. Next to her, we have Mr. John Lehman, another incumbent, then Mr. Peter Call, our third incumbent. Next to Mr. Call, we have Mr. Tom Handy, Mr. Anthony Arrington, and Mr. John Van Veder. Welcome, lady and gentlemen. Let's review the procedures for tonight and the ground rules for the forum. Each candidate will have three minutes to make an opening statement, beginning with Mr. Lehman, who won by a random pick. Our timer Debbie Drayer is going to let you know when your time is up. Debbie, will you be giving them a heads up?
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds?
Okay.
And Debbie is a middle school secretary and she knows business, so when she says "stop," you must stop.
I'll let you wrap up that sentence.
That's generous of you, Miss Drayer. After the opening statements are concluded, we will begin with questions from the community. Each candidate will have up to two minutes to respond to the same question, and we will rotate which speaker begins for each round of comments. Now, in this forum, there are no rebuttals permitted. At about 7:15, we're going to ask each candidate to have a two-minute closing statement before we adjourn. If your question has not been asked, or if you have a follow-up question, the candidates will be available after the forum for a brief period. Our ground rules state that there are to be no demonstrations of either support or opposition to the candidates or their positions. Those who take part in demonstrations will be out of order. By that, we mean clapping, or booing, or any hand gestures. So, please, just wait until the end, and then we'll thank all of our candidates with a round of applause. Thank you for observing these ground rules. So, let's begin with our opening statements, three minutes each, and we're beginning with Mr. John Lehman.
Well, thank you. I've been rehearsing this, so I don't know if it'll even take three minutes, but this is my, I'm facing my 16th year on the NINA School Board. And getting a little background, I'm a minor student. Grew up out of Ortonville on a farm, went graduate to Ortonville High School. Worked a year, four years in the Air Force. After the Air Force, went to school down Madison, GI Bill, graduated with a degree in mechanical engineering. Worked at Kimberly Clark from '82. So, I lived in Tomannasha since '82 until now. And my kids went through Spring Road and graduated to NINA High School. They're currently aged, my son's 25, daughter 27. NINA Schools did a very good job. I was very happy with the education they got. My interest in serving on the board this long has been, I believe in public education. I think it's a great institution. It's one of the things that makes this country great, and my goal on the board is to make it as good as it can be. And the last eight years, I've served as vice president and head of finance committee. And I'm pretty happy where we're sitting right now financially within the district. We have no long-term debt, and we balance our budgets and provide good services for our students. But other than that, that's all I have to say. Looking forward to a few more years on the school board if the public so chooses. And so, looking forward to the questions, and I want to thank you all for coming out tonight on a cold evening. Good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Mr. Call.
Good evening. Thanks, Johnson, for coming out tonight. Bringing the cold weather, I don't know about you, but I am tired of it, especially with my wife, who's out in Vegas this week. So, just a bit of my background, born and raised here, went to the schools here, my wife also did. After we got married, we moved to Appleton. After our first daughter was born, we moved back to NINA. Simple reason being, we wanted our kids going through the NINA Schools. Very partial to the NINA Schools. We felt we both were educated very well, served us well for our futures, and we wanted our kids to have those same opportunities. And that's why, eight years ago, I decided to run for the board. This is my seventh year, the first time I ran, didn't make it. And it's been interesting, it's been fun, it's been difficult, but overall, it has been very rewarding to spend time giving back to the kids and the people of the community. Because in my eyes, that's what it's about, it's about the kids. When I walk in that boardroom, agendas, personal views, thoughts, my parent thoughts, they at the door, and I do what's best for the kids. And that's from kid number one to kid number, you know, 6,000, whatever it is. Every kid deserves the best opportunity for them. And that's why I've chosen to do what I do and choosing to run again. And as John said, if you have me for three more years, I'll be happy to serve. If not, I'll be happy to still put my input in, hopefully doing what Mr. Handy does, staying on top of things and nudging the board really needs to be nudged.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. I want to let you know, I was born in Kokona, Wisconsin, and graduated from Kokona High School. Lived in the Valley all my life. Moved to NINA in '99, and I became involved 11 years ago when my son entered kindergarten at Roosevelt. So, went K through five at Roosevelt, went horseman for sex, Shattuck seventh eighth, and is now a junior over at NINA High School. So, that was where our interest originated from, interested in how they spend their tax money, and interested in what our students get out of it. And once I started attending the board, I became kind of a self-appointed community watchdog. I consider my Tuesday nights pretty much block teller for board meetings, but I had a short stint on the board in '06, '07, when I filled a vacancy. But typically, as most of the active board members will know, Tuesday night, I usually can be found in one locale. So, I appreciate you guys making a commitment to come tonight, because there's an awful lot of people in the NINA School District who we don't see their faces too often, so it's kind of special to see you here. It'd be fun to see you down at a board meeting as well. Anyhow, so now that my life has freed up a small amount, I've decided it would be appropriate for me to run for the board again and see if I could serve in a greater way. As Peter said, it really is about the students, and I'm a believer that you can always do different things or better things with the same amount of resources, and I have an opportunity to prove that every day as I work for a small construction company. We manufacture about 25 or 30 homes a year in the Fox Valley, predominantly in NINA. So, gives a person an opportunity to lob it out of the box thinking. One reality, I believe strongly, is because we did it that way yesterday, is not a good reason to do it that way today. So, you know, everything is in flux, and there's another flow that sometimes gets ignored when you get in larger organizations, and I think it's important that we're always tapping those resources. Thank you very much, and have a nice evening.
Thank you, Mr. Handy. Mr. Arrington.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out again. Anthony Arrington, originally from Chicago, Illinois. Been here since 1991, crossed over borders with Templeworth University through '96, and now working for Kimberly Clark. It's driven me here today, moving my background, working with Kimberly Clark initially. Started out as a trainer in the IT area. Mostly doing standard training for more technical things, having to write in some of the curriculum and learning the adult-based learning models, the ADD model and other things. Really has a strong interest for learning in general. Now, I'm year 18, actually working on initiatives with all of our production facilities to figure out exactly how to re-standardize training for all the hours employees across the entire United States. So, doing that's really given me think more about the education of my daughters, who also were inside the NINA School District with his mom. Originally, my youngest, when we lived here, actually lived in, we lived in combined lots. So, from the very start, we made my decision to open a roll in NINA, because we heard so many big things about the education of the school board, and we were just, we were doing it. So, we drove every morning to bring my kids to school, eventually moved into the areas more, and had the buses help us out with some of the transportation issues. So, seemed a lot to go into school, all the way from Spring Road path to Hoover, to Shattuck, horseman. And my girls also participated in the hoop spell for NINA, so very familiar with the school district itself, teachers, really impressed with how NINA handles education and how serious it takes it. And I thought with my expertise and the things that I've learned from my professional experience is that I can also contribute as well, lend a hand, see exactly how we shape the future. Technology is really my strong suit at Kimberly Clark, using my role as a lean consultant, sort of more into coaching and even training in that sense. But I love technology. Some of the things I've struck me as, I've watched my daughters bring home their iPads and Google Chromebooks, how we're addressing technology for the future and how that relates to how teachers can teach that technology, how students actually use it to advance their learning. All those things really excite me and interest me in the way we're progressing for the future. So, my first time out of the gate, and I wanted to put my hand in while I had some free time to actually see exactly where the board's about and really give my expertise and my expertise a hand, and hopefully progress in NINA towards that state of excellence that we've always been in. Thank you again for coming out.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. And Mr. Van Veder.
Yeah, I got to stand up. I can't talk so down. Anyway, my name's John Van Veder, and my background, I guess, is I was born and raised down in Greenfield, Illinois, and like Anthony here, I crossed the border and went to Lawrence. And met my wife in Appleton, and obviously gone back to this area. I taught down in Illinois for a couple of years, but my wife has none really bad, so we moved back to Wisconsin. Out in the Chiapas area for a while, then went back to graduate school in over Dean, and then taught down there for a year, was a little bit. And then was, I taught up in Clemville for 27, 28 years, and then taught night school in Fox Valley for a while, and taught at Oshkosh. Remembered here for three, four years, a great teacher. And at any rate, that's my background. I have six grandkids that are in the NINA School District right now, some are in high school, and one's in sixth grade down the street of Orsman. So, we hear about the school district all the time, and sit there at our place all the time. One of the reasons we moved to NINA back in '98 was because our grandkids, we've had 13 of them, and hopefully tomorrow we'll have 14, so hopefully that'll work. But that's why we moved back to the NINA area, and I was asked again to run for the school board, I ran last year, and was asked again to run this year, so I thought I'd do the same thing. Obviously, my reason for running, probably the same as everybody else, is they're going and wanting to see a bad school district, and NINA's been good. It's been, I remember back in the '90s, NINA was the school district not only the go-to at great athletics, but it was a great place to work and a great place to teach. People went out of their way to try to get a job in NINA for obvious reasons at the time. And I don't know if that's the case anymore. Someone might ask herself, why would someone want to come and teach at NINA rather than Appleton? That's a good question to ask, and at any rate, I'd like to make sure that that question is answered positively, and NINA would be a great place to work and a great place to teach. And I think when that's the case, you get great teachers and obviously does a great job for your kids. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Van Veder. Thank you all.
I'm so sorry. Sorry. Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me? Whatever. My name is Betsy Ellenberger. I am, as you can tell, I have an accent, so I'm not from Wisconsin. I don't have, I'm not from here, so we moved here about eight years ago, seven or eight years ago, and my husband got a job in Oshkosh, and he had to live within an hour of Oshkosh, driving distance. And we looked at Kokona, we looked at Oshkosh, we looked at Fond du Lac, we looked all the way to Greenfield. And I kept coming back to NINA thinking, that's all, it's NINA, I like NINA. NINA's great, they have a great district, good community, and we have these concerts in the park, we have all this wonderful community environment here, and I thought, you know, this is the place I want to raise my child. She was five at the time, now she's 12 and taller than me. And she started out at Coolidge, and it was the, it was kindergarten, and it was the second part of, we kind of came in the middle of the year, so she started with Mrs. Rosera. And to this day, I think Mrs. Rosera is still her favorite teacher. She's not here tonight, but just if you know her, who knows that she's very, she's very looked upon highly in our home. So, we decided that, yeah, NINA was the place we were going to start our roots. So, about a year later after moving here, I said, you know, I want to get more ball. So, I ran for the school board, and this will be my third term, if you guys will like me again, and I've enjoyed every bit of it. I love it. I love working with the other board members. We have a really good working environment. We've had so many crazy stuff happen the last few years, a lot of ups and downs, and we've done really well working together, the nine of us. And I mean, there's been some come on and off the board, but it's just been a great experience. My education background, I've lived quite a few places. This is the longest we've ever stayed in one place, and hopefully this is where we'll stay for a lot longer. But I actually went to school east through Michigan. Sorry, probably non-Michigan fans out there, but this is where we want to stay. This is where we want to have our home and where we thought this is the best place to raise a child. So, once again, I'm excited to represent you guys for the last six years, and I hope that you invite me to do for the next three. Also, I'd like to add that, you know, being on the district, being with the district, thirty seconds, all right. I'll leave with that, and you guys can ask the questions once we get in there. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Miss Ellenberger. We've got some really good questions here, and I'm excited to get everybody's take on these. Hard to know which one to start with, but we're going to combine a couple. Remember again, this is two minutes each and no rebuttals. We'll be starting with Mr. Call. And so, I'm going to combine these two questions. They deal with the morale among the teaching staff, and in reference to the high number of employees leading the district. How do you think morale among the teaching staff could be improved? Teachers are very overwhelmed. Mr. Call, are you ready?
To be honest, the, in an effort to get back into the schools, again, we've had our presentations, each board meeting by the schools, and I struggle with that because morale is bad. When I'm in the schools, talking with the principals and the teachers, they're coming to our meetings, we have some very dedicated and excellent staff, and I don't see the high number of people leaving. It's, to be honest, very possible some of the people with the new changes that we've had are looking at other careers or other professions. I have a daughter who's looking to get into the district in NINA as a teacher. I just don't see NINA being as bad as some people see it is. I was, we were just at the State School Board Convention in Milwaukee, and by comparison, what I've seen and heard out there, NINA is head and shoulders above a lot of them. A lot of them are still struggling with contracts from two and three cycles ago. They've got school board members being recalled, they can't hire superintendents, their staff is constantly fighting. And I see the school board and our staff, we're not opposed to each other, we are working together for the same outcomes, for the best possible education that our kids have. And one thing that I've been very happy to see is the effectiveness project. The people are working together, the high performers are being compensated and recognized as high performers within the district. And that is why I'm very happy, and hopefully my daughter will have a chance to interview and get a teaching position in NINA. She loves little kids, she loves to teach, and for her, it would be an excellent profession. She's been back subbing, and she's totally enjoyed it, and the staff has been very helpful, supportive, and has loved to hammer.
Regarding morale and teacher leaving being overwhelmed, I think right now we are in a position with the teachers being somewhat overwhelmed, and not the teachers in general. I want to basically reach out to all the staff. I think the technology changes that we're experiencing now are coming upon us quite rapidly, as opposed to what we previously planned for. We do have a significant amount of teaching staff that is highly, highly dedicated to what they do, which furthermore adds to the difficulty of what they do by always trying to achieve more, provide more, even than the district asks of them, so that's quite difficult. We do have some staff that are disenfranchised, and we have other staff that are quite happy where they are. So, it is a mix. I guess I'd like to see some kind of a survey or a poll, the board might have had one, but I missed out on seeing the results of it, what would come from our staff, you know, on a simple five-point checklist. One thing that I have brought to the board's attention in the past, I don't believe right now that our buyout on the health insurance program is as high as it should be. We should raise it up to the benefit of our staff. Those who have other insurance options could gain from that. It's, you know, additional way to compensate them if they don't need the benefits. It'd be good for the staff and for the district. And I've brought forth ideas, not in public, but ideas on our post-employment benefits that we have for our staff. I think it is really important to attract staff and keep them and grow your crop from within, as opposed to hiring all from outside. So, I am concerned with people who have been in the district a very short period of time, have complete mobility of their retirement benefits, and have the same benefits and advantages that our long-term teachers have. I don't know at this point, we just went through kind of a long grueling affair to get to where we are, but I personally would like to see an arrangement that was more to the benefit of staff that have been around a longer period of time, and those who continue to stay with us over the long haul, as opposed to folks use it as a jumping on and off point for their careers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Handy. Mr. Arrington.
So, when I think about morality for the teachers and how to improve the morale, three words pop into my head right away, and some of the same concepts that we have in uniform. We talk about tools, things that will make teachers feel supported in all the change that's happening down in Wisconsin, or just in the school districts in general, lots of change. We talk about technology, we heard about doing more and less, so giving the tools so that teachers can still feel that they are being able to achieve and give the learning objectives to students, that's the way that they feel if they can, and that they're supported by the board. Those are two major things that come to my mind, and recognition. Those three things always, typically, as you, as someone that's also working, feel for your employer, same benefits. Why I don't have specifics exactly what those programs would be, those are the three general concept areas that pop into my head for how to improve the morale.
Thank you, Mr. Arrington. Mr. Van Veder.
Yeah, I'll give an example. The school board meeting last two-year, whenever it was, it brought up the idea of changing the calendar. And the calendar change would be, instead of having seven half-days, I guess, they want to change that to seven full days with no kids, the teachers come for the full day. And at the beginning of the meeting, they had an open session, a lady got up and talked about how it's going to be a disruption in the elementary school for music, I think, maybe art. In classes, they only offer once or twice a week, three times a week. This is going to be a disruption as well as any other place. But at any rate, then she was told that later on during the board meeting, they get back to them and they discuss the calendars. Now, they did discuss the calendar, and there were a lot of discussions with stuff, I think. However, they never did get back and talk to this lady about what her problems in the elementary were. And not only that, there were a number of questions asked, but nobody ever asked what the teachers thought about having a full day rather than a half a day. I mean, the kids love it, they don't have to go to school for a day. But what do the teachers think? Would they rather have a half a day, or would they rather have a whole day? What kind of disruption is it? And you might also want to ask what the value of these days are anyway, from a standpoint, if everything is done within your district, you haven't been going outside and talking to the teachers, you might question that. But, so I think that a lot of the teachers, at least from I here, are not very, well, they're respected in a way, but they're not respected, and they're not, maybe they're not, their views aren't considered important. But I really think that in order to overcome this, you need to involve them more, and not with teacher, administrator, then I think you need to get the teachers where they're not afraid to talk to people, and they're not going to be judged on what they say, and so on and so forth, that they'll have honest input and not be swayed by somebody else who's at the meeting that may have some, I'm done. Thanks.
Mrs. Ellenberger.
Does it know? It was off there for a second now. Stutter? There you go. I want to answer John's question there for a moment. At the last meeting, it was answered, and I think it was Heather's question that was read from Debbie, and it was a question about if you have art and music and how that's going to affect with the new full days that we're going to be implementing. The full days are for the teachers so that they can get, talk to other teachers and figure out what everybody's doing, so that they can teach their kids a little bit, you know, have a lot more information for the kids and how to get them better prepared for the teachers. Those days are for the teachers particularly, but we still have more than enough hours in the school year for the kids for educational purposes. But I believe the question was about the half-days and how the art and the music was going to be, and it's going to be, the days are going to be, you know, they're going to be cycled in and out, so that not one class is going to be constantly not showing up for the day, so, or for the month. Sorry, I'm really nervous up here. You guys are going to forgive me, I'm like stuttering. I want to say that last week, also, TAF was there, and it's a brand-new school, so they pretty much, they've started from scratch this year, from K through five, and I've never seen so much excitement from a staff. I didn't see the morale down. I saw the staff, there were new members, and then there were some seasoned teachers, and they were, they were so excited about being together and to get together with the school and all the new things they were doing, and all of what the kids were learning and so forth. I didn't see the low morale that day. I haven't seen it in a while. I think the new starting salary schedule for someone that's just getting out of college now, it's $40,500. No experience, right out of college, that's what they're making. That is the highest salary in the Valley. And to me, that's wonderful for someone coming out of college. I didn't have that coming out of college my first year. So, I'm impressed with that, and plus with all the benefits, the health benefits are wonderful and so forth, I would be excited if I was a teacher coming into NINA. I wouldn't be disappointed, so.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman.
Can you hear me? Well, been in the district 16 years, I do recall eight, nine years ago, having 200-plus staff members at board meetings, and I would argue that morale maybe was even worse then than it is now. Morale does concern me, but I do believe that, you know, since Act 10, there's been a lot of change in the state and in our district, and change is always difficult, but change is not always bad either. And what we, what I've tried to do, and I think what our board has tried to do in our administration, was minimize the impact on staff to these changes. And we've, you know, to me, morale, you know, it's pay, benefits, work environment. And as Betsy says, our pay used to be $34,000 a year for starting, now it's $40,500. Our benefits really haven't been reduced much. We took our premium-based healthcare plan that cost $24,000 a year down to $12,000 a year, and it's a max out-of-pocket $3,000, but we give the employees the first $2,000. Also saves them money on their premiums, because it's only about $100 a month for the premiums, now that they got to pay 12.8%. So, I think what we're doing is making wise decisions that is the best outcome for our employees, our taxpayers, and our district. Also, you know, the environment, we maintain our buildings. We were only able to put about a half million dollars a year into building upgrades, maintenance, boilers, and since Act 10, we put about $200,000 a year. So, I think that's another plus. Also, our staff, I mean, we talk about IT, we spend IT, we have high-speed internet in every building, wireless, plus all our staffers have their own laptop that they can have you around to work on lesson plans. Also, since Act 10, we're going to put 4% into the salary plan every year, 2%, it's all some of it's performance-based, but some of it is more American.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have another convo. We've got two questions that are very similar. All right, we're going to have another combo. We've got two questions that are very similar. We're going to be starting with Mr. Handel this time. This is about Teacher Effectiveness Plan, which is the evaluation plan in NINA. I'm going to ask you if you can comment on how you think the teacher effectiveness evaluations differ from previous evaluation tools, and whether you feel that the effectiveness project is effective, or if you're concerned about the amount of time that teachers spend to produce this document. So a comment on how you feel it's different, and whether you feel it is effective, and the amount of time used to produce the document is proactive.
As far as that goes, I'd be perfectly honest with you. Many of those documents are really only available to staff. Person couldn't judge them by going down to admin. Each cycle every two weeks, when I purchase my board packet, it doesn't have the information in there that would show what's required of the staff. I'd be interested in hearing what kind of a dream it is on the staff. Obviously, every new assignment is more to do. It takes away from the teaching days. So in that regard, it gives me some concern, but that's only unknowingly. And as far as what the previous evaluations were, I know for a fact our staff had evaluations in the past. Now, whether that was strictly administrator-based, and this feeds in to give the teacher an opportunity to put input into their own evaluation. I apologize, but I can't say for certain what differences that we have going on there. I can see from the outside looking in and not seeing the documents, I can see that it could be a benefit to teachers. I can see it could also be a distraction and not a benefit. Again, I'd need more information to answer appropriately. I guess overall, as we talk about, is the project worthwhile, like the start there first? I'd have to say yes. Getting metrics in any case typically is better than not. It's better to know exactly where we're going and how we can progress to that new goal that we're trying to get to. So having ratings, I think, are very effective. We have measures in everything that we do. We have measures in business all the time. Getting used to doing that is, I think, very practical. The hard part is what was just mentioned, is the administration of it. And I'm not privy to exactly how difficult it was to capture this data before it was announced, but I can't argue against the fact of the need for it. I think that if it is cumbersome, then that's a different conversation regarding exactly how we can get more effective. I think that the intent of having it is a worthwhile attempt.
You ready? Yeah. The Teacher Effectiveness Plan, as I, affecting this project, as I understand it, was originally made by a guy named Strange from William and Murray College, or something like that. And he developed that over a period of eight or ten years. And now it's become the first thing, I guess, because if you ever see it, like, it's a ninety-four-page packet of who knows what, and if you read it, there's every kind of educational jargon known to man in this thing to evaluate or for teacher evaluation. Now, I don't know how it's used particularly, but that's all I know about, as it is, is the physical object. But I do know that it takes quite a bit of time to fill it out, to go through the objectives and all the other things that are involved in there, and whether things have been accomplished or have never been accomplished. And I've heard teachers say that it's a nightmare to go keep this thing filled out and keep it up to date, and so on and so forth. But I'm not sure how the administration uses it to evaluate the teachers or anything like that. And I'm not sure how it's used for salary advancement or anything like that. That's maybe at the board room, so. Thank you.
The Effectiveness Plan, yeah, I think you can hear it.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
The Effectiveness Program, it's here to stay. It is a worthwhile adventure. I mean, it's very layered. There's so many different ways in order that you can achieve what you need. Yeah, it takes a lot of time. It is still a work in progress for our district. It will be tweaked and tweaked for years to come, but I believe it's so worth it. I mean, we're being able to give to those rock stars that are in, our rock star teachers and administrators that are in our district, are able to say, hey, you've done an awesome job, and let's reward you for it. And to me, that makes it worthwhile. That encourages other teachers to want to do the same. And I think it's working very well in our district. Yeah, once again, it needs to be tweaked. Everything needs to be tweaked at all times. I mean, it's not a perfect system, and we're working on it. It does take a lot of time, but I do think it's worth it.
Okay. I do remember how we, you know, would evaluate teachers previously before Act 10 and Effectiveness Plan. We used to have negotiated with the union contract, we had steps and lanes. Each year, there's another step, and for the first ten years in our contract, teachers got a three-point seven-five percent pay increase. After that, it was reduced, I think, up until year twenty. Then basically, after year twenty in the district, there's almost no pay increase at all. Unless, and then there was lanes where if you got more credits, you had a master's degree or whatever you were doing, another maybe three, four percent bump in pay. So what we've done with the Effectiveness Project, now we have six different pay levels. It's pretty much based on how corporate America is set up, and they work with them when they are. We have pay ranges, and based on performance feedback, it determines what level you're teaching at, and that's where the pay is set. So it's no longer time engraved, so to speak. And again, that's a lot of change for people to adapt to. And if I think, if I recall correctly, prior to, once a teacher was off probation, there was no more in-classroom observations. Now, part of our feedback is, it requires our administrators to go into the classroom at least three times a year or whatever, and do observations and provide feedback for the teaching staff. Other than that, and to me, having worked at large corporations, nobody likes performance feedback. It's a painful system, and never were perfect. And our goal in NINA is to try to make it as worthwhile. And as a board, I put a lot of faith, it's our administration's job to do that. And we sent our administrators to school to learn how to do feedback effectively, and we need to do a good job of making sure that it's objective, that's consistent across the district from school to school. And we do have metrics that we try to do.
Mr. Call.
Yes, it is different. It is a state-mandated program, and I was happy to see we jumped on board early, didn't wait for you on the last one, and then have to at the last minute throw something together, find a cookie cutter, and slap it together and hope it works. We've been working at this for a few years, and yes, initially, things do take time because it is different. The staff, the teachers are learning how to, you know, evaluate what they're looking for, to show to the administration, here's why I'm doing a good job, and here's why I'm valuable to the district. And I think a good teacher would want to do that, to show, hey, here's why I'm doing better than somebody else. But we've also got in there some school-based performance also. So it's a layered system. As John said, I thought we had seven ranges, maybe it is six. But you can reach different levels based upon how far you want to go. Do you want to be, you know, a leader in the district? Do you want to, you know, fit in where you fit in? And it does take time. I've learned, starting a new career a year ago, as we get older, things are more difficult to change. We get set in our ways. We're used to doing something the same way, and change makes us uncomfortable. One thing I've learned is uncomfortable, when you're uncomfortable, you are growing. So I don't want to be overwhelmed, but I also do want our employees to be a little bit uncomfortable when they're looking at themselves and say, am I doing what I should be doing for the kids? And if you are a little bit uncomfortable, that means you're pushing yourself, and you're getting better at what you're doing in that classroom, because that's what it really is in the end all about.
Thank you, Mr. Call. Mr. Arrington, we're going to start the next question with you. Name one thing you would like the district to do better than it's doing today, and how would you help, or what role would you take to make that happen? One thing that you'd like to see the district doing better than it's doing today, what is your role in making that happen?
So as a parent of two kids in the district, at least for the last fifteen years, one of the things that struck me, even in really doing some research and thinking about being a board member, was a little bit about communication. I know that they're thinking on the news, and I know that you can read certain articles here and there, but it took more effort for me to pull different things and come down to the school board district. I think communication, if we could somehow spread the word a little bit further about some of the great things that the new school district is doing, I think it would engage the parents a little bit more and create another environment where we hopefully have more of the seats filled and forums like this, and having more people come out to the school board and actually take an active part in their kid education. Because I know initially, being a young parent, when I started, I didn't think about these things. And as I started learning more about the issues, about STEM, and about core competencies, all those other major elements, it was really enlightening. It also scared me a little bit. I thought, we have a major responsibility to our kids, to our students, and to the teachers, and to the administration. And I'm not sure, I didn't feel, that there's enough communication for that. So what I do have a detailed plan is that we have to communicate that. But we have so many new ways now, with social media, ways that will reach the new generation to take that on. And that's really what my focus would be, using technology to help drive some of our messages home of the excellence that NINA already has.
Yeah. One thing, huh? First of all, you need a school district that's run very efficiently, effectively, a good school district. But I think your kid go to school here, they get a good education. If they don't, it's their own fault, put it that way. But one thing, I want to harp on this, is... Yeah, Becky, you said forty thousand dollars or forty thousand five hundred. You bring in some new teacher that... Did I say that right? Okay, I'm sorry. At any rate, it's important, but on the other hand, you need a routine. The teachers here with experience. A new teacher takes four or five years to get their, you know, get their bank of tricks straightened out so they know what's going on, and maybe a few more. You get a person there with ten or fifteen years' experience, you'd like to keep him around for the next ten or fifteen years. The question would be, why would someone want to stay in NINA rather than go to Appleton? Or rather than go to any other school district? That's the question. And you have to, I think the idea would be to involve the teachers in more meaningful discussion and problems that are going on, how to solve the problems, ideas, things that might need to be changed. And when I say meaningful, value their input. They're the ones that are down in the pits doing, you know, they're the important people that are at the stake, are them. They're the ones that get the job done. School board, yeah, you have to find somebody to do it, but they're the ones that actually do the job and get it finished. And these are the people you want to keep around, the people with experience, the people that have been around for a while, and they also have a wealth of ideas and knowledge to help you out with. That would be the thing I'd do. And I don't know how I'd bring it off, but meet with them, talk to them. Since Act 10, you know, the feet have been pretty much kicked out because there's no arbitration anymore, not arbitration, but there's no negotiation. You don't need negotiation. Get together for breakfast. I don't know, have a picnic, talk, find out what they like and what they don't like. I don't know.
Mr. Van Eer, Ms. Ellenberger. It seems to be my turn to off by itself, too.
It does. So... Is it on? No?
Yes.
Yep, there it is. Okay, there you go. I have a couple of things. I'm really passionate about language courses, and I would love to see us get language courses at the elementary level. It is a huge passion of mine in the district. Every time it comes up, I bring it up at the board meeting. I'm always the one that voices my opinion on how do we get those. And so that's something I'm going to keep working on on my end. So language classes in the elementary level. We did get it in the middle school as of recently, which I'm very excited about. So we have Spanish and Chinese now that we're offering at the middle school level. Secondly... French, sorry, and French. And also, I'm really passionate about having volunteering more in the schools. So at a secondary level, is having some sort of requirement for graduation to have volunteer hours. I think it's important that our kids, that they learn the value of giving their time up without having to get paid for it, that they understand just the art of being a volunteer. And as a way of getting it more involved, my hand or my side of it, I would say look for some parent help, and I would actually volunteer to help on that, too. But I'm sure that we'd get a lot of people in the community that would want to help with that, too.
Thank you. Mr. Lehman.
Okay, only one, huh?
It's your dream question. What's the one thing you'd like to change in the district?
Well, I think that financially, no, I think we're in pretty good shape within NINA. I have to admit, it's been my first ten years, we wanted to balance the budgets and negotiate. And I think now, as a board and as a district, we can really focus on our curriculum and what that needs to be so that students come out of our, out of NINA knowing what they need to know in today's world and economy. And I do worry about common core curriculum and how that's going to be implemented within NINA and within the state, and all the testing and the teaching to the test. But to me, you know, the board is supposed to be the positive setting curriculum. We need to have more conversations around that. What does that mean? And what can we do better? And what do we want our students to learn? So I think that's my main concern right now, and focus would be on the curriculum. The other thing is, kids that fail today, we have a tougher job in the public school system because of, I think our society is what's being, what has failed in the last twenty, thirty years. We look at what's happened in Milwaukee, and it's not the schools that are failing, it's our families, it's our societies. And we need to come up with real solutions to address those types of problems. And I would like to do more within our own district, leveraging the many volunteers that we have. I think we'd be happy to come into the schools and read to a first, second grader, work with our staff, and try to take some of the burden off of them because they have a tough job. There's a lot of kids, there's a lot of different, varying needs within each classroom. And so I guess, to me, that's more an after-school program for the kids that are really struggling. And again, we got to look at the students that are really doing well. We have a magnet class, but that's only, you know, a few kids, twenty or thirty kids out of the whole district. And we have, you know, sixty-four hundred kids. So I guess, to me, for me, it's like, it's all about the learning. That's what public education is about. It's not, it's not going with the emotions. It's what do you take away when you leave the schools.
Thank you. Mr. Call.
I just have to pick out one thing. And what I would like to see, and I harp on it a lot of meetings, a lot of places, is to make sure we're focusing on a hundred percent of our kids. I graduated from NINA, and NINA has always, and this isn't a bad thing, has always been real good with the top ten percent and the bottom struggling ten percent of our students. So we can't forget about the other eighty percent. In public education, every single kid deserves the best education, whatever that might be. If we're doing great on the, you know, the higher-end AP classes, what about the other eighty percent of the kids out there at the high school and, you know, the core classes? And the ones that are taking your standard classes? I don't want to see us let down those kids. Their parents are paying the same amount as other kids are paying, and they have a right to expect a quality education. And this ties in a little bit to the state mandating now ACT testing for all the kids at the high school. Not a huge fan of that. Not every kid should be taking that. A lot of kids are going to go right to the workforce. A lot of kids are going to go to a two-year technical school, which we're very short on, and some kids will go on to college. So it gets back to, are we really doing what's best for each kid by saying every kid at the high school has to take the same test? We're putting everybody into the same basket, and every kid shouldn't be in the same basket. A parent and that child should be able to decide, do I want to take that test or not? Is this the best route for me? It just doesn't make sense that we're trying to shoehorn everybody into that same basket. Every kid and family needs to decide what's best for that student.
I'm going to quickly use some of my time. Betsy mentioned volunteer opportunities. I know almost everybody in the audience probably knows this, but for any community members who might not be aware, on behalf of our nine standing school board members and all of those who've gone before them, our current stipend for the school board members is two-hundred fifty dollars a month. So if you consider the amount of time that they put in, which is probably a minimum of ten hours a week, they're not really compensated for what they do. It is a volunteer position. And I usually take the opportunity to point their orders frequently.
And I usually take the opportunity to point their out as frequently as I can, so I'm going to use some of my time for that. The one thing I would like our district to do better today than we've done in the past, and what would my role in that be? Based on the things that I hear in every single open forum, I would like to create an avenue to communicate better with staff in a manner that's similar to an open forum and a board district, being as the fact that we hear every time at one of these voters forums that we have so many disenfranchised staff. I want to be naive and believe it's smaller than what the impression I get. But nonetheless, I would like to be able to communicate with those people. When I fill a vacancy on the board, in the past, we had monthly staff meetings where administrators, board members got together. I forget, we had a special name for it, but, and there were members of our teaching staff, same handful of dedicated teachers showing up each and every time and seldom any of their current parts did. I would like to open an avenue like that. And I think that the whole process sort of crumbled when the district was presumably at odds with the teachers going through Act Ten and changing up their world and wanting to change the insurance plans. I'd like to see that be reinstated. Just because we stopped doing it doesn't mean it wasn't worthwhile and a good idea. That would be my concern. I'd really like to get to the bottom of whose disenfranchises and why, and have our staff have the opportunity to have an input that they can believe that people took in consideration, whether they're agreed upon in the end or the decisions made they agree with, that they feel that they had a voice in it before it comes to fruition.
Thank you. We're going to begin with Mr. Van Meter on this next question. And I'm going to combine two because they're very close. The overall question is, can everybody hear because my microphone is finally dying? Can you hear me way over there? I'm good, thank you, Mr. Van Meter. What is your feeling about the importance of keeping fine arts in the curriculum? And another person wrote, are you a musician? Are your children musicians? How committed are you to NJSD, continuing visual and performing arts education even when budgets are tight?
Go for it. I say that one big word, go for it. I think that fine arts is phenomenal. I took up playing a violin about ten years ago, just for the heck of it, until my shoulder got so bad I can't hold it up anymore. But I heard my granddad's violin. I couldn't believe I could learn how to play it. I had a granddaughter in school at the time, she used to take violin lessons. And so I just took the same book. I figured if a fourth grader can play it, so can I. The point is, I think NINA has one of the greatest fine arts departments, band and art and so on. And I like to keep it that way. All my grandkids have participated in one form or another. Band-a-rem is a phenomenal thing they have at the high school. And I think it's a great thing. You can't have an education without some sort of art, without some sort of foreign language. And I'd like to see foreign language in elementary school too, especially Spanish if nothing else. But it costs money, but I think it'd be well spent. So as far as I'm concerned, the more fine arts, the better you are. And I think it makes a very full education. I don't think you can do without it. Thank you.
Absolutely, I support the arts and the music. NINA is known for their music. And I do have a child that plays the drums like I did. She likes to beat on things, so she does a great job at it. But yeah, no, I think NINA is very rich in curriculum when it comes to music. Our orchestra is beautiful and we've got the music people in here. So, and they do a wonderful job. They inspire our kids and I thank you part.
Well, I think that it's important to have a broad and diverse curriculum because we have kids that have different interests, different needs. Even a mechanical engineer, you probably would realize that may be not a big one. Only issue I play is a radio. My last art class was a freshman in high school. But I do recall learning a lot of things in that art class about perspective and colors and such that I think I still remember and use to this day. And as an engineer, when you design something, you know, to me aesthetics is important. And so I do believe that we should be supporting the arts, the music, foreign arts, that sort of thing. Because it's foreign language, you wouldn't consider that an art class. I've always been a proponent of driving that down as early as possible because that's when kids are most adaptive and learn a foreign language. We're better and I don't want to change any program. Thank you.
I guess I'm going to agree with pretty much everybody up here. Fine arts, art, music are a big part of an education. Somebody growing up, and no, I am not a musician. And people are very happy about that. I have a wife and three daughters that are very musically talented. And one daughter in particular, very gifted art-wise. And it's been a big part of their lives. It's been fun to watch what they do. Although whoever we did for a Christmas party went to Pinot Pala at Appleton and they did a little bit of art, which was really interesting and really fun. And this kind of gets back to a little bit of a hot button of mine with the co-curriculars at NINA. We're also very strong in co-curriculars. And people always think co-curriculars as sports. It's not just sports. If anybody went and saw the drama at the high school, unbelievable. If, you know, the marching band, vintage, Act Two, those are all co-curriculars. And people are getting a little burned out sometimes about having to volunteer and fundraise and booster clubs. I'd like to see us support those more as a district financially. And one of my favorite times, we were giving some art awards. About two or three years ago during a board meeting, and one of the artist's pictures was being hung in Tom Petrie's office in Washington, came in his baseball uniform. That's what I love about NINA. You get a well-rounded education, arts, music, athletics, your core. Everything is important. And whether it's drama, whether it's Act Two, vintage, or baseball, that activity is the most important to that student. And I wouldn't want to take any of those opportunities away from our kids.
No, I'm not an artist. I'm not a musician. And I'm like John, I don't play the radio as an instrument. I'm much bigger on self-reflection. So I do most of my day in silence. My son is a very accomplished violinist and he loved it while he did it. And it was the absolute heart and core of his education at that time. He's since dropped it predominantly to fill other things into his schedule that he, that interest in. So it was not really an exiting, it was a change of interest or a diversion at that point in time. I believe it's extremely important that we offer a diverse program, not just in the fine arts, but yes, in the fine arts, to answer the question at hand. I think it's amazing when we look at the energy level of our staff that are involved in classes outside of the core. Obviously, basically, they're involved in a constant recruitment drive because their programs flop and fail if they don't work their tail off to keep kids exciting and interested. If they are disenfranchised staff, they hide it well, at least when their students are around, to be sure. It's amazing what they do to keep those programs up and running. I'm in favor of the greatest amount of choice that's available in education because there's too many students who feel like they have to go there. So to give some choice and entertainment out of it is incredibly important. As far as what we do with those, in my opinion, we offer them. But enrollment to me is democracy. The students decide what's important to our district as a whole. When they make up their enrollments, it's no different than you folks going to the ballot box later and deciding which of us three will represent you best for the next three years. Our students vote each and every time when they fill out their schedules and they determine what their space for and which extracurricular subjects in particular they're going to take because obviously the cores are dictated to them.
Thank you. Finally, Mr. Arrington.
So for me, I'd say a resounding yes. Arts are hugely important. I've actually mandated that my daughters do some kind of music or art in any kind of way. I'm very fortunate that my eldest loves music anyway, so she's very accomplished as a violinist and also she plays flute. For me, arts, they're very important. Music is closer to my heart. Coming to school at Lawrence University did not come from music, but how do you live on a campus with such a view of conservatory and not partake? So I am a musician as a part of that. I sing, I write. I do have some CDs I've played with some bands locally and still kind of that for a hobby. So I definitely appreciate the arts and music and what that's about. Even more so than just the fact of doing it, you've got collaboration. You've got students that are now learning to play with one another and that teamwork. And of course, there's always that connection of music and math that we always hear that is very important. So this is a resounding yes for me, that arts is very important and it's something that needs to be maintained and we've got to find the time and budget for it.
Thank you. We're going to begin a new question with Ms. Hellenberger. According to the numbers in a recent Post Crescent article, NINA joint school district had the largest net outflow of students to other districts through open enrollment compared to every other regional district in the report. Is this concerning? And what should NJSD do to reverse this trend?
Actually, I don't think we did have the largest net in the valley. I think that was actually a combination, yeah, I think Coconan did. But there's so many different reasons on why people open and enroll. We actually had someone that started making the phone calls and to the different families on why, why they decided to open and roll. You know, for example, there was, my neighbor, for example, she, her daughter goes to the Renaissance Academy up in Appleton, because her focus is that. And, but that's their choice as their family. A lot of them, it might be because a mother or a father has a job outside of the district and they decide to open and roll for that reason. Every family has their own personal reasons on why they've done it. I think that NINA has a lot of pride. We have a lot of pride in this, in this district. And I don't see it as a fault of that. I see it as just circumstances of the family, so.
Okay, yeah, I think Betsy, you're correct. Coconan by far had the largest open enrollment out. Kimberley, Appleton, in because probably in close proximity to Coconan. I think NINA's, our numbers have gone up a little bit as far as net out each year. I think there's maybe around a hundred students out. I can't recall exactly. But I did ask the superintendent what the reasoning was and she did tell me that they had surveyed all the parents who opened enrolled their students out and what their cause, what the reasons were. And many different reasons, as Betsy said, it was based on where the parents worked and what's easy to transport because they're responsible for transporting the students in and to and from school. Some, some parents choose to take their kids out of the district because they think NINA High School's too big. They have around twenty-two hundred students. So there's, and I did talk to, and I was down at the state convention. There was an administrator there that I worked in, she was the principal at Oshkosh and they took your kids to NINA because of the great programs they had at NINA High School. So it may have worked both ways and I don't see it as a big issue. But I do think we should stay on top of it and do audit and track, you know, the reason kids are leaving and why they are coming to NINA as well. And some parents asked me, well, no one asked my students when they, when we talked about NINA and we went to the private schools, well, that's not open enrollment. And that's why we probably didn't contact those parents because that's a private reason why they chose to take open public enrollment.
The numbers are a bit of a concern, as John and Betsy have already mentioned. Various reasons for people going in and out of a district. And that doesn't mean when they do leave, they don't ever come back again. There may be charter schools that they're going to. A lot of the charter schools only go through elementary or middle school and they may come back for high school. But yeah, I would like to see that a little more balanced if we could, as many coming in as going out. And, you know, drive down to the nut of it is there's something that we are lacking here that we might be able to do to keep more of our students. But unless, you know, something new is on the horizon, we'll probably be where we've always been. I mean, our district, for the seven years I've been on the board, totally enrollment wise, but very flat. So it just isn't a huge, I guess, a concern at this point. But if the numbers keep going and getting more out of WAC, yeah, we really would need to drill down and find out, is there something more that we can do? Is it the transportation? Is it the convenience of where mom and dad work? Is it a charter school that's drawing? Those are some options, but we don't have the population base that I see like Appleton would have to do some of those charter school options. And to be very honest, I think in the seven years I've been on the board, we've had one group come to us with a charter school option. It's not something around the board table that we're going to decide just to open something if the need isn't there. If we do hear a need, we're very open to listening to that. And I always go back to, you know, we are one of nine, so we don't have the opportunity, you know, to do as much as maybe some people think. But it is, I guess, a small concern at this time, but if the numbers do keep going the way they're going, I think we're going to have to be a little more proactive in looking at something to keep the kids in the district.
Thank you. Mr. Handby.
Hi, yes, it is concerning. And I guess at this point in time, I'd consider it a matter of fact that we don't have the highest outflow rate, but it's higher than we'd like it to be. I think we've heard from enough board members on that. I would be interested in seeing the study of why our students are leaving and that we continue to conduct it in a manner that we have. The fact that the superintendent said, yeah, we reviewed them and there's a bunch of reasons. Personally, I'm the kind of a detail guy, that wouldn't really work for me. I'd be far more interested in seeing a list of the reasons that are involved to determine, you know, if it is per se a fault of our programming, a fault of our organization, or what causes it. Again, being a builder and being out in the community and dealing with people, I can tell you I have a fairly hypothesis of teachers in NINA that are residents, but not teachers in the NINA school system. And they think very highly of the school districts that they work in and they take their children there, completely independent of having ever used the NINA school district as their, you know, home base for students. And I have heard numerous occasions about the size of our high school from other people who have left our district, whether it be to other public education or private education venues. I don't know at this point in time what we're really going to do about that. We have an enormous high school out there that's well-managed and handles our students. It's in fairly good condition. We're not looking for replacement with our enrollment being essentially flat for the years that I've followed it, but it's not like we're going to be rushing out and building a supplemental school on the other side of town to, you know, make the school size simply smaller. And additionally, as we know well, the more students we put into one building, if we manage it well, the greater level of cost efficiency that we have as far as student distribution and class size numbers as well.
It's hard to add anything more to that. We've heard the phone numbers, it really is what it is. I come from the other, other side of the fence where I lived in combined locks and I had struggled for transportation reasons. Two working parents getting the young ones out of school at before four o'clock was a challenge. So I took the other way. I actually relocated myself to NINA so I could stay within the district. Not everyone has that luxury and that ability. So I'd be interested too to find out the second and third level of reasons of exactly why they're leaving out of the district and see if there's anything that we can do to mitigate those gaps.
Yeah, I think it's interesting to know why they open and roll. Every district is different too. When I worked in Clintonville, a lot of kids would, few, if any, change. And if they did it, it was usually for athletic reasons or it's for easier graduation requirements. Where kids are having trouble and would do a different school with the graduation requirements would have a couple of credits less. But in, in small towns like that where the schools are farther away, you don't have the problem that you would, for instance, in Appleton. Where they have different high schools right in town and they could change from one high school to the next. And a lot of that is based on athletics. And I think it's, it's hard to compare the number of kids coming into Kimberley from Coconan. And I'm pretty sure that's, a lot of it has to do with athletics. Although I see Coconan kicked Kimberley pretty good the other night, so maybe they don't want that. But I, but I think the thing is, I think you need to find out why and pull these people and get some ideas on why they would like, why, wouldn't somebody want to go to school in NINA? It's a great school district. My God, you'd get a phenomenal education. Why, why would you want to leave unless it's too tough? And that's not the case. It can't be too tough, I don't think. So, but it depends. And it depends on what, what level of education or if you're not going to go to college, you're not college-bound. Maybe there's some other things in other schools that you would rather, rather take. An industrial education is better in a different school, I don't know. But these are things that we should find out about to make sure that, as Tom says, you want to have everybody have a very well-rounded education and maybe these are one of the reasons that people are leaving. But, but we need to find out first. Thanks.
Thank you. I think we have time for one more full-rounded question before... I think we have time for one more full-rounded question before we have our concluding remarks. And we'll be starting with Mr. Lehman on this one. So the question for everyone is, what did you see are the negative results of Act 10 to Wisconsin Public Schools? And what can we do here to mitigate the effects in Nina? Negative effects, if any, of Act 10? And what could be done to mitigate those effects to our district?
Well, negative, negative effects, I guess to me, that's the biggest one is the change. And obviously, you know, if I was a, you know, a teacher in Nina, there was a lot of changes made to our, our early retirement benefits. And a lot of them that we were trying to make here in Nina 10 years before Act 10, which weren't able to do it. So I don't, personally, I, I don't see any negative effects from a learning standpoint within the district. It gives the board a lot more flexibility to, to change our programming, change our benefits, manage our, our workforce. And so I see that as positive. But again, we got to make sure that there's more responsibility to the board to treat the employees fairly and openly and honestly. And I, I believe we've done that in Nina. We, as I said, we changed our healthcare plan, but it's not overly a burden from a financial standpoint. It's still a good plan. Actually, we used to have three different policy manuals for applying based on admin staff and support staff. Now we have one employee manual. We treat everybody pretty much the same. It's not a matter of what you're, whether you're an admin or a teacher or a, or a support staff member. So I think some people even came out better from a benefit standpoint. But again, it's, I think it's treating people with respect. I think we have great staff within Nina. A lot of them are, are still here. I see a lot of my teachers that my kids had at kindergarten and first, second grade. So I hope they stay. And I do believe that we should get input from our staff. You know, as an employee, when I was at Kimberly-Clark, I thought it was crazy. When the administration teed out and said, we're going to do this or change this, and they didn't get input from the people that were working on the floor first. So I hope we do that. If we don't do that, I encourage people to let me know because I think that is a great benefit to our district.
Thank you. Mr. Paul.
I agree with pretty much what John said. Act 10 gave us a lot of flexibility on what we can do and how we can do our money management, where to put it, where we're going to get the most bang for our buck. Probably the biggest negative that came out of it to some of the staff members who were getting close to that early retirement, we, we changed that early retirement program. And some of the staff members that I've talked to, for me, it's never been anything personal. It's always been about what's doing the best for the kids. We just didn't have the money to keep doing what we were doing. You know, you, you can't keep going down that same road. Eventually, you get the end of it because we were 168 or 186 million dollars was our other post-employment benefits unfunded liability. When I started only seven years ago on board, today it's about 27 or 28 million dollars. You have an unfunded liability hanging over your head. You don't have flexibility to do the things that you want to do. And Act 10 has allowed us to put money, change, as John said, our healthcare programs. Instead of paying the insurance company, now we're able to give that money back to the employees. It's, you know, what we wanted to do, as John said, for years before that, but we couldn't because we weren't allowed the flexibility. So going forward, and I only see it getting, you know, better with time as people understand how things work. We keep having some good discussions and as I mentioned earlier, we're in this together. It's not us against them, it's us for the kids.
Biggest negative of Act 10, I would say, is the staff's feeling of loss of voice. And I think that's what we're hearing with the disenfranchisement of our staff. How deep their funds, I don't honestly know. But I believe that is the biggest negative of Act 10, whether it's real or imagined. The fact is, they lost the voice. They lost a specific venue for handling their employment in a manner that they were accustomed to. The best way that at this point in time that we can mitigate it, because let's face it, it's a law, it's been approved, it's run up and down, it's not going to be going back. It's now it's a matter of how do all parties involved make the best of the fairest means of what we have. And I think basically, I revert back to my comments earlier. I think that we need to take a look at how we pay our staff who's coming in. Are we paying them more fairly than we're paying our staff that's already stayed the course and been with us? And is there a better way to redistribute the new post-employment benefits that we have so that we aren't paying, you know, first year and second year staffers essentially in the same manner we're paying long-term members? And is there a method that we can, to some degree, recreate what there once used to be by creative use of the exact same funds that we have? Again, by shaking out the, the length of time employees serve for those benefits? And another one that I think is on teachers' minds as a whole is that we may need to, at some point in time, again, look at redistributing or compressing the amount of administrators that we have in relation to the amount of teachers that we have. It seems we've done an incredibly good job of cutting that back to what one would consider bearable and manageable and may seem to be creeping back on there with fair regularity. So obviously, we'd typically be in favor of more certified staffers versus other positions were practical.
Thank you. Mr. Arrington.
So the negative effects of Act 10, actually, I think Mr. Handy said it, said it best, it was the loss of voice that is, is there. For me, still working at Kimberly, but every, every year we seem to have a new way of evaluating and comparing programs, change is hard. No matter when it comes or how it comes, it's very difficult. I think that the hard part of, of Act 10 has been getting around the communication and changing the perception of exactly what can be done with the new program, right? So it almost becomes a precursor to the question we heard before about, about the morale. I think as we have more communication, as we more have more understanding and be able, and really be able to have a whole conversations and understanding that, hey, benefits were able to change, we can do a little bit better. We've got more flexibility with the budget and really give out more of those positives. I think that that can really change the, I say, quote unquote, negative effects of Act 10. I think there are a lot of positive things within that. There are just some things that we all need to work through with change, as we all do with change management in general.
Thank you. Mr. Van Meter.
Yeah, when Act 10 went into effect, it upset a lot of people. I mean, you saw them down in Madison for days and many of those people are still working here. So if you want to find out what negative effects there were, if at least on your employees, why don't you ask them? They'd probably tell you. Obviously, things aren't going to change, so the problem is, how do you live with what you have now and keep people happy and keep people in the district and loving their job? You'll never see it in how they perform their job though. I've never, regardless of how bad things get, I've never seen a teacher do less of a job. I don't care whether they haven't had a raise in 10 years or anything else. They'll work their buns off for, for anything before, before they'll ever treat kids badly just because they don't like the job. So you're not going to see it if you walk into a school. You won't see it. What you need to do is you need to ask and think. So I think the result of Act 10 is the fact that you've lost all your input from your teaching staff, whether it's recommendations on how the schools run, how they evaluate, whether they think they're fairly evaluated, the whole works. Obviously, the school board can operate any way they want right now and, and money-wise, it's pretty good shape right now. Very good shape. But the point is, what do you do now to take advantage of what you've learned in the past and improve things? And that's the thing I think is important. If you can forget what happened in the past, could improve on what you have now, and it takes some imagination to properly do that. So that's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ellenberger.
I'm going to kind of repeat a little bit of what's been said. It is, it's the change. I mean, it was a completely new way of thinking, different way of thinking completely for all the teachers and it was, it was hard. It was like a bandage, you just kind of rip it off the ends and then everything was exposed and then we had to kind of rebuild. We used the tools very well in our district, I think, from Act 10. And I think that we are working, working as a board whenever we were going through all that. I think we, we tried to make it as easy as possible as we could for our teachers. I think they maintain their, their effectiveness in the classroom. We didn't have any issues with any of that with a lot of other districts. Our teachers stood up to the challenge and I really believe that, that, that things are getting a lot stronger in our district. I think that we're working through it now and, but I think it's here to stay. And, and we're working on it and I think, once again, with great teachers and great staff and we went through it really well.
Thank you all so much. We're going to give each of you two minutes to make a closing statement and we're going to begin with Mr. Paul.
Again, thanks for coming out. Thanks for taking the time to listen, to ask questions. Hopefully you've gotten some of the answers you were looking for, maybe not. As I said, I'll hang around a little bit after. If you do have further questions, happy to answer them. It's been an honor and a privilege for the seven years I have been on the board. I do what I can, when I can. It is one thing we always do need to remember though, we are one of nine. One person can make a difference, but as nine together, we can make a lot bigger difference. And that's been the fun thing about being on the board. It's very diverse. Everybody has their own opinion and that is a good thing because we're able to spend the time hashing out those issues, discussing it from all different viewpoints and in the end, coming up with what we believe is going to be the best for the education of our kids in this district. One board member who I miss a great deal, we were opposites in many, many things, but when we walked in that boardroom, 90% of the time, we agreed on things because we always put the kids first. Agendas were left at the door, as I said earlier, personal feelings, parent feelings were left at the door because we have to look at all the kids of the district and how we can best serve those kids and the families that really, you know, they're their kids. I sometimes talk about they're our kids. In my mind, yeah, we're here to educate them and help them the best that we can, but those kids are your kids. You entrust them to the district to do the best that we can for them, but in the end, those are your kids. And I always want to remember that and make sure we're doing right by the kids and the families of our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Handy.
My hope would be, basically, I don't know what I had to say, I stole my question six here. It should have come earlier and then it wouldn't have mattered, but the biggest thing I'm going to bring to the board is creativity and out of the box thinking. I'm quite familiar with the processes of the board. I'm quite familiar with the challenges that are facing the district now since I've been as involved as I have been for quite a period of time. But the important thing now is that we use creativity to make the best of what we have. As I said earlier, I wholly believe that we can compensate our teachers who have worked here longer and better than we do now. We could, and let's be fair, at the end of the day, they love their job, they love their kids, they do it for the passion, but none of them will be disenfranchised if they were getting paid what they wanted to be paid. So unfortunately, you know, it does break down to, it is a job and it is economics. It is definitely about the compensation. And I think folks who stay the course, it's like any job, who, you know, a lot of you stay there typically, the more you anticipate that you're going to make, the greater freedoms that you're going to have. And I, I think there's a lot of room that we can do that if we just have some of those open conversations. We could do it within the budgets that we have. We could do it without spending any more money. And I think we can do those same things and we can put it forth and provide a broader curriculum, probably at a lower cost than we do now. It's, it's the standard of, you know, when we first approached some of these things five and six years ago, we were looking at one program, we cut a little from what would we do? And we finally got to the point where we cut so lean, there was no more cutting and we hit the, the beautiful point where we were forced to restructure it. We could no longer just cut the neck and change it. We actually had to do something meaningful to change the method in which it ran. And if we apply that same thinking now, we have the same critical thinking skills, we'll have the same achievement in other areas. The, the problem with human nature is we don't normally do that unless we're forced to. So that means a matter of the administration, the board, the districts needs to step forth and force ourselves to do those things regardless of some overwhelming doom is looming over us and we can achieve an awful lot as a group.
Thank you. Mr. Arrington.
Thank you again for everyone coming out because Colby made, really appreciate the questions. He really got to the core of what we already knew about Nina. There's such a great pride here and really it's all about doing the best for our students and then giving that excellence. Again, I'll be new to this, this process and to the board, but what I bring to it is the experience for our 18-year within Kimberly-Clark, seeing exactly how our adult learners are progressing through their careers and maybe think backwards to how do they get to the spot that they're in? Are we taking care of our kids on the, on the back end? Making sure that they progress and have the skills necessary to be contributing when they get to large business or to a technical profession, whatever it is that they decide to aspire to? I am very motivated in the fact that these concepts are all in me. It's, it's a, I'm like a sponge at this point, learning more about the core, which I'm actually applying at Kimberly-Clark in the exact same way for what we're doing with our, our adult learners there for, for their technical skills. So some of the same concepts really apply. It just really got me to thinking, how do I get a student up to that level and watch them contribute and make our country any better than what it is, our state, of the companies that are running here or wherever they decide to go from. So hopefully as well, take some time to think about that and I appreciate the time you have had.
Thank you. Mr. Van Meter.
Yeah. Yes, this thing, um, I just liked it probably here, I didn't think anybody said here, it's all pretty good here. But one thing I'd like to add, I don't know if you're aware, but I'm a phenomenal advocate of public education. And I think the eyes ought to be concerned about where the money's going because it seems to me there's a big push to, for corporate charter schools. There's so much money involved in education that anybody that has a business that wants to get involved can make a lot of money if they got something to pedal. But I'd like to just encourage everybody to be an advocate of public education, be careful where the money's going so that our district and other districts don't lose. As you can see, things are going to be pretty stagnant for the next couple of years if the government budget goes through. It hasn't been settled yet, but it'll be interesting to see where it goes and how it affects school districts, especially our, not, well, our district for sure, but smaller school districts in under Wisconsin could really be in big trouble. So I think I'll just recommend everybody to, to be aware of what's going on. If you get involved in any type of advocacy for public education, please do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Ellenberger.
They'll migrate down. They all. It's freezing time.
Thank you, Tilsit, this way.
Wow, where do I start? Six years ago, I got on the board and I, I tried to sit here and think all the changes that have happened since I've been on the board. Wonderful things. I'm going to go positive, way positive. Let's see. Hired a superintendent within the first year and I think she's done a remarkable job, Dr. Mary Piper. Let's see. We have the lowest teacher, the student ratio in the elementary level, anyone in the Valley. We have the highest ACT scores of any public school in the Valley. We added a welding class. Actually, it was supposed to be one course, we were just trying it out. Fill it up. I think we ended up with six or seven courses of welding. The only reason why we have not enlarged it is because we need more teachers to teach welding. So that shows you the popularity of it in the high school. Also, we've added Chinese. We added Chinese just this past year, a non-traditional language, which I think is very important. So many things to be brought out of this, in this, in this district. I'm excited. I'm, I'm glad that I've been able to represent you in the school district for the last six years and I hope that you go to the ballot box on April 7th, that you seek with me, the only girl in the ballot. So, I had to say. So once again, thanks again for coming tonight. And so the, the women voters, thank you for holding this forum tonight and have a nice, nice first day evening.
And now Mr. Lehman.
All right, started and I can finish up my, so. Thank you all again for coming out and thank Mr. Rourke Cast, our State Assemblyman, for showing up. And so anybody who wants to sort of plug in for public education later, you know, say hi. 16 years ago, when I first ran for the board, I was asked by the, I got an invite from the union to interview with them in their headquarters or some place at North Appleton, Northeast Appleton. I showed up and one of the questions they asked me was, well, are you going to be a rubber stamp for the administration? I was like, ah, no, I don't think so. Who do you know on, on the board? So I don't know anybody. And I said, well, why are you running? I said, well, I'm just running for public education and want to be an advocate for students. And people ask me, well, why are you still on the board 16 years later? The kids are out of school. I said, well, I think I'm the board to be an advocate for my children, be an advocate for all the children. I think that's how our board operates. And not just an advocate for the students though, we've got a balance of all the stakeholders, it's our staff, it's our parents, it's our community. So that's how I make my decisions as I. So that's how I make my decisions as an engineer, like gather the facts and make the best decision, take the emotion out of it and do what's best for the long term. I don't believe in taking the can down the road and letting someone else take care of the big problems. So I think we've done that at Nina. Also, when I know when I was put in the ballot box, I think I don't go for the incumbent office, I need somebody else new in there, but I do believe, you know, if you're happy with the people that are there, a lot of reelect them or because they have experience and there is a lot of, there is a lot of things it takes to learn. It takes probably about a year to get on board and really understand what's going on, on the board and how public education is funded and all the different issues. And I guess last, last week, what I do make decisions, what I try to do is use common sense and do the right thing. And I'm not afraid to, I don't care about one on nine, but I do believe we, you know, we are nine board members and one board member can't do anything. It's, we have to work together to make anything happen. Thank you. Thank you, Ellenberger.
So we're, we're finishing right about on time. I want to thank all of you for coming out tonight. Your questions were awesome, there were so many good ones, it was hard, but still have these wonderful questions. I hope that you will take the opportunity to speak with the board. Thank also the public library for the room and the legal women voters for organizing this and helping us through. And please join me in thanking our candidates very, very much.